From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy, and our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Sure.
Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, July 19, 2022, 2:00 p.m. meeting of the Board of Supervisors. I'm going to begin by asking Margot Razan, our county council, to report on any actions taken in closed session.
Good afternoon. This morning in closed session, you met on item number 50, but there is no reportable action.
Thank you. And next, we will consider the consent agenda, and agendas are located on the back tables by the doors for anyone wishing to follow along. All items listed with a CA above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. So I'll read the consent agenda items now. Starting on page two, we have item three that's on consent, but I do need to read a correction into this item. If you scroll down on the item, once it gets to the capitalized letters beginning with "open hearing," instead of "approve" on the second line of the capitalized letters that says "approve," "cancellation," etc., we're going to strike "approve" and add in the words "adopt resolution approving." And then on page three, all items four through seven are on consent. On page four, we have items eight, nine, and 10, as well as 12 and 13 on consent. So in other words, 11 is off consent and will be heard in listed sequence. And on page five, all items 14 through 18 are on consent. Page six, all items 19 through 25 are on consent. Page seven, all items 26 through 32 are on consent. And finally, on page eight, items 33 and 39 are all on consent. And so at this time, I'll ask if there's any members of the audience that would like to ask any questions or make any comments on the consent agenda items that I just read. Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board for any questions, comments, or I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry to cut you off there.
Not at all.
I need to read to the record that I will abstain from item number 29 as a potential source of income to myself. While I will vote on the consent agenda, my vote will not contain a vote for the specific item number 29 as I'm abstaining from it.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now we'll go back to page two on our agenda, item number one, which is public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action to direct the staff to place an item of business on a future agenda. So at this time, I'll ask if there are any members of the audience would like to make a public presentation. We ask that you state your name and observe our two-minute timeline. Please come forward. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Ralph Robles, and I am a veteran. In the spring of 1970, one of my duties included training green berets from Bateau's, Germany, on the operation of the Fulton Recovery System. This entailed airdropping a kit containing three suits, a 300-foot nylon line, a helium tank, and a balloon. The procedure was to suit up one to three rescuees and attach them to the line, connect the line to the balloon, and fill the balloon with helium. Once the balloon was aloft with the line, a specially modified aircraft would snatch the line and yank the would-be rescuees from the ground, reeling them in like fish on a line. In April of that year, the Apollo 13 space mission had a mishap and was returning to Earth, but no one knew or no one was sure where it would land. My boss called me in and asked me to volunteer to go and rescue the three astronauts should they land in hostile territory. I asked him where that territory was. He smiled and said, "I can't tell you, but I recommend you brush up on Russian phrases." Well, you can bet I was doing the laps on the rosary beads that night. Happily, the astronauts landed in the Pacific Ocean, and I went home whistling "Merry tune," but I did volunteer for that mission, knowing that it would probably be a one-way trip because the system would only rescue three people, and I would be the fourth guy. I volunteered because it was my duty. Today, it is my duty to ask you to authorize a forensic audit of our recent election. At your meeting on the 28th, I listed questions that reflected serious issues about the integrity of that election. To date, I have heard no answers to my questions, and since then, I have heard that no ballot drop boxes had surveillance cameras. I also heard that Dominion personnel were given access to the ballot machines prior to the completion of the ballot counting process. If this did occur, the opportunity for mischief is multifold. At this point, it is manifestly important to approve an honest forensic audit, and I hope that you will give this serious consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Robles. Appreciate your comments, and once again, thank you for your service to our country. Your stories are fascinating, and we appreciate you sharing them with us. The clerk has advised me that we had provided your contact information to Mary Bedard, who heads up our elections, auditor controller, also heads up elections. Has there, I'm turning to staff, has there been a request submitted that Ms. Robles receive a written response on these requests from Ms. Bedard? Because if not, I think that that should be our next step to do so.
Chairman Scrivner, I'm not sure if a response has been made. I'll put an inquiry in with her office and connect with her and make sure that she is aware of that request and ask her to provide that response.
Thank you. And if you could notify her that the board members would like to know when Mr. Robles could expect that response, please.
Thank you. And I was contacted by someone from her office. They asked my URL, that is my email address, and said that they would send me something, but I did not receive anything after that. I want to let you know that it was an honor to serve you, and the purpose of my stories is to remind you that there are a lot of veterans in this county, and there are a lot of people who serve you as first responders, and you have a lot of constituents, past, present, and future, who are owed an honest election, and one that they can smile and say, "Yeah, it was close, but it was honest." I hope that you will, at the very minimum, do a recount by hand and ensure that all the signatures, at least, were correct, and that there were no multiple addresses from one location. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and honorable supervisors. My name is Jim Wheeler. I'm the executive director of Flood Ministries. Over the last year, we have been working mostly under the radar to help those that are experiencing homelessness in Delano. During that time, we have provided 1,287 showers, 2,690 mills, and 352 loads of laundry. But more importantly, we have exited 30 individuals to other stable housing situations, and we currently have 10 other of our DNC clients that have a housing voucher in hand, and they're looking for housing. In total, in the last year, we have served 200 unique individuals at the Delano Navigation Center. We recently celebrated our first anniversary with a special night of service for our clients and with wonderful support from the community. At that time, we provided haircuts, and hygiene kits, and mills, and more, all donated by members of the community of Delano. I want to thank Adventist Health in Delano for their support as they provide the mills for us, also Mills on Wheels, the Delano Association for the Developmentally Disabled, as they've been a fan of ours, and they've helped promote us and allowed us the use of their building. Clinica Sierra Vista and other community partners who've come to help provide COVID clinics and other important services at the Delano Navigation Center, and the city of Delano who's come around to our project. And right now, they're currently refabbing a building and rehabbing a building so that we'll be able to provide overnight shelter in the near future. And most importantly, I want to thank the county staff, the CAO's office for their support, and Planning and Natural Resources for helping us be able to capture some funding to support us this last year, and of course Supervisor Couch's office have been wonderful through this process. We're also excited to announce that we are starting a project in the city of Arvin. We've had a great partnership with the city of Arvin. They've come up with funding for us to do something similar to what we're doing in Delano, and it's been to provide services to people not just in Arvin but also in Lamont, and we're looking forward to that. The County General Services Department has been a great partner, and again, the CAO's office has been a partner in that process as well. And then I want to thank Supervisor Couch's office again for helping to spur this project. We're anticipating to open an Arvin Navigation Center in just a few weeks, and you'll be receiving an invite to that. At this time, I'll entertain any questions if anybody has any questions.
Supervisor Couch?
I don't have any questions, Jim. I just want to thank you for what you're doing. Delano to Arvin happened to both be in the fourth district, but that's really from the north and the south of the county, and the need is everywhere, and I just appreciate what you guys have done. You've really stepped up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Next speaker, please. Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to board member announcements or reports. Do we have anything from the board members? I do want to ask our planning director to give us a brief report. Anything from the board members though before that? Anything from the board members before that? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to ask Laura Ioviet, our Director of Planning and Natural Resources, to briefly report on zoning issue comments that were raised during public presentations at our AM session. We appreciate you being here. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So the project that was being referred to this morning is within our Kern County Housing Element Implementation Project, which is a staff-initiated changes to various land use designations on 61 privately-owned parcels throughout unincorporated Kern County. Per the State of California and our adopted housing element, the county is required to rezone a total of 214.14 acres of land to high-density R3 development. All of these property owners, these are private properties, but they have concurred with these requests. The project was considered at the June 23 Planning Commission hearing. A number of the sites were recommended for approval. Some sites were recommended for denial. Some sites were continued to August 11 for further evaluation. We anticipate that this will come before your board at the general plan window, which is September 27, for your consideration, and at that time, the parcel that was referred to this morning will be included in that package for you to review. In addition, a question was raised as to what requirements are placed on multifamily housing in regards to usable space. In the Development Standards already, which is 19.80020, any multifamily housing development of five or more units is required to provide 5% of their area as common usable open space. They are required to put in something, a playground, a picnic area, a dog run, some sort of usable space. So we do require for five or more units. Obviously, the five or more units is intended that we do not expect that from a duplex or a triplex that has a private yard. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ioviet. Do we have any questions from members of the board? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for your report. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Perez, I'd ask the other board members, do you have anything under board member announcements or reports?
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is off consent, and that's item number 11 under the County Administrative Office. This is a proposed agreement with the Open Door Network to provide litter abatement services from July 19, 2022, through July 18, 2023, in an amount not to exceed $1 million. And this is from the solid waste fees and our federal ARPA funds. And I'll ask Jim Zerbis, our COO, to start us off on this discussion. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Honorable Chair. This is really an exciting partnership being proposed between the Open Door Network and the County of Kern. And actually, Amanda Ruiz from our office is going to present this item for you this afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman Scribner, members of the board. The item for you, like Mr. Zerbis mentioned, is in agreement with Open Door Network to provide litter abatement services focusing on the incorporated areas of Bakersfield and rural areas in the county. Last October, our office presented your board with a comprehensive homeless action plan. Part of this plan included response teams to reduce hazards that exist with litter and illegal dumping to improve the quality of life in the county. Following a request for proposals, the contract was awarded to the Open Door Network, formerly the Bakersfield Homeless Center. The Open Door Network is experienced in providing these services, particularly in current partnerships with Caltrans and the City of Bakersfield. The Open Door Network's job development program currently employs over 100 people on 30 work crews. This effort will expand upon their mission to hire those that are homeless or formerly homeless. This agreement would include three, four-member teams responding to hotspots around the county where litter or illegal dumping is a constant issue. These teams will also be available to respond to calls for service when needed. This can include bulky items such as shopping carts, bicycles, appliances, et cetera. Funding for this program, as mentioned, is available for a combination of solid waste fees and American Rescue Plan funds. The recommendation today is that your board approve the proposed agreement with Open Door Network for these services for a term beginning July 19, 2022, through July 18, 2023, for an amount not to exceed $1 million, and authorize the chairman to sign. That concludes my remarks, and I'll now pass it off to the Chief Executive Officer of the Open Door Network, Ms. Lawrence Skidmore.
Thank you, Ms. Ruiz. Chairman Scribner, members of the board, my name is Lawrence Skidmore, CEO of the Open Door Network. Some of you might not be familiar with the name, the Open Door Network. Officially, July 1, we have merged two entities together, the Bakersfield Homeless Center and the Alliance Against Family Violence and Sexual Assault. We've been operating as sister agencies for over a decade, but now we've officially been able to merge our two entities together, hence the new name, the Open Door Network. This allows us to streamline services for homeless individuals, as well as our victim services aspect that has our domestic violence and sexual assault shelter. But before I go any further, the individuals behind me are really the key players in this agreement today. I'm really excited for them to share our story, for them to highlight the amazing work that our individuals that come through our doors are able to participate in. This is the next step to self-sufficiency. This is how we get our individuals out of our shelter, into their own homes, and being able to provide for themselves. So I'm going to introduce the leader of the pack, Andrew Miles, who's going to explain a little bit about the program. And I just asked him, I said, "Okay, the agreement is official as of today. Are you ready to start a crew tomorrow?" He said, "Yes." So here he is.
Hello, board members. I appreciate you guys having us here. A lot of you guys are already familiar with us. We do work for Mr. Couch, Ms. Perez, and Mr. Maggert in their districts, so you guys are uniquely positioned to understand what we do every single day. We want to thank you for putting your faith in us on those different job crews. And just to give you a little bit of background, since 2018, we've gone from six contracts, I'm sorry, to 17 contracts. We've gone from 40 individuals employed to 115 individuals. Right now, we're in a unique position to grow and expand more, and we have vision for our crews and for our program. We love being able to place people in jobs and help get them into housing, but we also want to train and equip them for careers. I don't want them working for me for years and years and years. I want them to go use this as a stepping stone, right? Our program, just the job program, not Open Door as a whole, but just the job program, is responsible for over 520 people being housed since its inception. We're doing something right, right? And so with the help of you all, we wanted to keep on doing this for a long time. And what I would like to do is just introduce one of our stars who can give you a little bit of an inside look, because I can tell you about the contracts and what we do, but come on up. Introduce yourself, tell me.
Hi, my name is Carmen, and I've been with this Open Door Network. It just changed its name, but for me, I've been a nurse for 23 years, and I needed something out of the box, and they gave me the opportunity, and I wanted, I always thought, I wanted to do something for the city. Did I have the time? I didn't, but circumstance brought me into this program, and Andrew gave me the opportunity. And I've been with them for five years, and it's just been growing, and I've been seeing it as a motivator for all these homeless persons that are trying to pick up the pieces. And homelessness has been a big issue now that I'm working with the program and I see it. But with businesses, and they see the output that we're out there reaching, and we motivate the homeless people out there, they're my brothers, they're my sisters, and we have to motivate them that there is hope. We can listen and say, "Hey, you know what? Sometimes we have to take that walk in the desert, and maybe you guys are taking the walk in the desert," thinking there's no hopelessness. We are there to help. And by planting the seed, I've seen it with my own eyes, and we've just been getting all these people coming in, putting applications, and to me, it's been wonderful. And the support we get, and just by business people that are out there saying, you know, this program has helped us a lot with donations and saying, "Hey, well, we'll give you 20 bucks." No, donate some Clorox, that's what we need, and to keep it sterile. And they've just been supporting us, and it's been great, and I'm just glad that... I'm going to kill these guys because they surprised me today here, and I'm just like, "Ah." But it's been a great, great organization. I don't know the words to say, but it's helped me to go out there and really go in the dirt, get my hands dirty, and I love it. And every day, it's been a blessing, and it's just go, go, go. Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers on this item? Any other public speakers? Members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, we'll return to the board.
Motion to approve and authorize. Chairman to sign.
Take it.
Thank you. A motion, a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. That brings us to the conclusion of our agenda. We do have no further business, and so as we did this morning, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in the memory of our two firefighters that we lost last week, Aiden Agnor and Brian Falk. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some of we are adjourned.